I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, bless all our actions and carry them on by thy gracious assistance so that every prayer and good work of ours may begin from thee and by thee be happily ended through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Okay, roll call.
All right, Rob Meider.
Present.
Joe Von Sass.
Here.
Tim Kohn.
Here.
Kim Wagner.
Here.
Tom Snyder.
Here.
Steve Pascoe.
Here.
Okay. Next, I need approval for the March 12th meeting minutes. Motion.
Make a motion to approve.
And a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we have Jennifer from SCK. She's gonna do a presentation of the audit that they performed, what, in February it was, I think?
Yes, on 2024.
Right, okay, it's time to.
Very good, so hopefully you all have all the bound copies, deliverables. There's a bound copy which includes the state financial report which was submitted to the DCD as well as mailed to the Adams County Clerk of Courts, and then there's two additional letters to those charged with government. So we'll go over those three items. I did have one additional handout that you can grab if you wanted to look at that. So first off, just wanna thank Jessica, she was great for the audit, as you'll see in my comments that follow. It was a very good year, and she had things buttoned up and ready, so thank you for having everything and answering all of our questions. So I'm gonna start with the bound copy. The first couple of pages of that bound copy there is our independent auditor's report, which is attached to the financial report that was sent to the state. So this is our report where we express an opinion. For 2024, we have expressed an unmodified opinion. That's what we refer to as a clean opinion. It's the best that you can receive.
Correct.
Then the pages that follow are the multiple pages of the DCD report. This is your financial statements per se. I'm gonna go through these fairly quickly because there's other pages that we can take all of these, there's other sheets that we can take all of these numbers and just look at it in one snapshot. So essentially what this is, the first two pages are your balance sheet. So as a municipal authority or a mu- mu- municipality, you report on fund accounting. So there are multiple funds in the columns that you see there. So you have a governmental funds category which includes your general fund, the special revenue fund which includes your state liquid fuels, some people refer to that as the highway fund, and then you have a capital projects fund. So here at the Borough, within the capital projects would be your rec fund and any reserve funds that you have. You also have a proprietary fund which includes your enterprise fund. This is where your sewer and solid waste activity is reported. And finally, you have a fiduciary fund which is where your two pension plans sit that the Borough is a plan sponsor for. So within each of those columns, again, this is your balance sheet reports at any assets and liabilities. The second page is a total fund balance at the end of 2024. So in total there, you can see fund balance was about $4.8 million for the year, and you can look at each of those columns per fund. The pages that follow then will be your statement of revenues and expenditures. This is equivalent to a profit and loss statement, if you're familiar with that language. Again, reports by column, each of the funds, and then by rows breaks it out into different categories. So revenue starts with your taxes, grouping, if you go, I know it's hard to follow because there's no pages, but go back about five pages gets you to total revenues. So total revenues for the year were about $2.7 million. Then the report goes into expenditures, again, starts with the general government category, go back a handful of pages gets you to total expenditures for the year, which totaled about $2.6 million, which gets you to the end result of your excess or deficit of revenues over expenses. So for 2024, you are reporting an excess of $56,445. Again, I know that's a lot, but we'll see it all in one picture here, see. The next page is your debt statement. If you put to have any debt, that will report it, be reported here. The Borough currently has none. There is one item reported on there that is related to the saves guaranteed debt. So while the Borough does not make any payments currently on that debt, if saves were to default or not be able to make those payments, the Borough will be liable for a portion of that, therefore they need to be reported. The following page then has your statement of capital expenditures. The Borough reports on the modified cash basis of accounting, which you do not capitalize fixed assets or depreciate property, plant, and equipment. If you were to do so in 2024, these would have been the capital assets that were purchased, items such as a police vehicle, some sewer work, a mower, et cetera. This page also reports total wages for 2024 at the bottom. And then the final page of the DCD report is where our audit opinion is attached, and there's a couple of footnote disclosures. Number one discloses the fact that you report on the modified cash basis of accounting, and footnote two discloses the fact that while there is a debt listed related to the guaranteed debt on the debt schedule, the Borough pays no principal payments out of pocket. So all of that said, then there should be a blue sheet in the binder, and then there's one big summarized sheet which is referred to as the notice of audit. So this takes the entire DCD report, puts all your funds, revenue, and expenses on one neat page where you can see everything. This is the report that gets published in the newspaper and advertised. So again, you can see by the different funds that you have, it starts with your beginning fund balance on January 1 of 2024, all of your revenues by their categories, expenses to get your excess or deficit of revenues over expenditures, and finally, your total fund balance. A little bit of a different way to look at the numbers is that separate sheet that I had just handed out, it kinda has like a orange box on it. What this sheet does is compares 2024 more activity to 2023 activity. So you can see where the report kinda starts at the top, that's bringing in your excess of revenues over expenditures. Now your note, it's only about $4,000. That is because this is carving out your fiduciary fund, which as I mentioned before, your pension plans. They are large and they, in a good investment year, have a lot of activity which drives up your net income. So this is carving that out so you can actually see true operating results of the Borough, if you will. So compared to 2023, I'm gonna call it net income, for lack of a better term, net income decreased about $185,000. And to show you what makes up that decrease, you can see below. So in total, looking at revenues, revenues decreased about $45,000. However, expenses increased $140,000, we'll say. And you can see in the buckets there what categories increased or decreased. Just a couple of comments that I have. The tan box, the orange box, is simply highlighting tax revenues that you collect. So you can just see in one lump sum, tax revenues were down about $12,000. Largely, while earned income tax was up, transfer tax was down a little bit there. You can see the sewer charges and solid waste charges, the increases and decreases there, moving down to expenses. Of course, general government was up due to more legal expenses involved. Public safety, again, I mentioned a purchase of the vehicle. You have your public works related to sanitation, so of course, neater trash rates went up, as well as handover sewer rates went up, so that's the driving factor there. Highways and streets, your wages and benefits were down, therefore that's why you're showing a decrease in expenses there. And then you also note a large increase in the employer paid benefits and withholdings, which is related to your pension plan. Your MMO requirement was a bit higher this year to be paid into those plans. So again, take it for what it's worth, it's just a different way of looking at the numbers year over year. So those are the numbers. Before I get into the letters, does anyone have any specific questions? I know, it's a lot. Take the time to absorb it, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Jessica has mine.
So we had a lot of legal fees this year. So what category would they fall into?
They're in the general government.
Okay.
So if you actually look at the DCD report, they are account 404. So for 2024, you had all but $91,000 sitting in that account. Okay, so then the two letters that we have here, I'm gonna start with the letter that's stapled. The other letter is just one sheet. This is referred to as our required communications letter. So certain aspects of the audit were required to communicate with those charged with governance, such as yourself. So starting in bold there, the significant audit matters. We're gonna start with the qualitative aspects of accounting practices, simply states that as management council, you are responsible for the selection of the accounting policies. And I said, as before, you report on the modified cash basis of accounting is acceptable under the state, and there were no changes during the year to those policies. If there were, we would be required to report them here. All, the next section there talks about estimates. Again, you report on the cash basis, typically under the cash basis, you don't really have estimates, so that's just noting the fact that there are none. The next section talks about difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Happy to report that there were none, which is just as important for us to communicate had there been any, but that would give us the opportunity there to do so. The last section on that page talks about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So the corrected misstatements are attached to this letter, referred to as audit adjustments, and they will be made to the Borough's books. There were no uncorrected misstatements. Then page two starts with disagreements with management. Again, same concept, there were none. Management representations, there's a list of items that we require management to represent to us in a signed letter, which we have already received. If the Borough were to consult with any other CPA firms regarding accounting matters, accounting policies, we would have to note here in this letter, to our knowledge, there were none. And then again, the letter rounds out with the adjusting journal entries here attached. So there are two pages. The first, we refer to as adjusting journal entries. There were six in total. Just to give you an idea of the impact of the entries, when we received the trial balance, the books per se, again, this is carving out the pension plan, we report that 100% from pension statements. So when we received the trial balance, it was reporting a loss of $1,117. Upon these six entries, we adjusted net income to $3,952 that we saw before. So our audit entries essentially increased your bottom line by about $5,000. Almost entirely that amount is driven from entry number six, which is to true up payroll liabilities. The outsourced payroll firm that you use provides journal entries to Jessica, and they require a little bit of tweaking to get items in their spot. So Jess has done a good job, and moving forward in 25 here, this entry likely will not be needed in the future because she is taking the onus to report these items properly where they need to go. The second page there has three entries on it. We refer to these as reclassifying entries, not requiring the Borough to make these on their books. We simply make them in order to get items properly on the state report. Otherwise, the state will come back, and it's kind of like when you fire individual tax return, there's flags that they, they're trying to tick and tie items back and forth. So that's just getting up, putting things in proper buckets. There was nothing wrong with where they sat, we're just trying to alleviate the state from following up on certain items. Has no effect to the bottom line, essentially it's moving from one expense account to another. Okay. Then the final letter is what we refer to as the management letter. This letter covers the internal controls over financial reporting. We do not express an opinion on the internal controls, however, we are required to assess them and test their effectiveness. So this year, there is only one comment that rose to the level of being written in the management letter, and that is a comment which has been here for years and is in many municipalities of the same size, and is quite common. It is segregation duties purely due to the fact that on a day-to-day basis, pick one transaction, and it is not segregated each step along the way consistently every time that that transaction comes in the door. Think about a cash receipt, comes in the mail, the same person that records the deposit is reconciling bank statement, takes it to the bank, et cetera. So in order to overcome that comment, it would be a big onus on the Borough, so I kind of just like to soften the comment a bit to say that the controls are in place for oversight over segregation of duties. Borough council reviews financial information, there's dual signatures on checks. Bank reconciliation should be reviewed by a council member if not prepared by a manager, those types of things. So just wanna bring it to your attention and emphasize the importance of your role over the financial reporting of the Borough. So those were the remarks that I had for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions, or again, if you digest everything and wanna reach out, feel free to do so.
We appreciate you, the audit, and we appreciate Jess, the job she did this past year, because I know in the past there were a lot of issues, and things are really straightening out, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Yep. I think you did a great job.
My first year here, there were 36 entries for the, there's what, six this year?
Yeah, which if you look at some of them, they're very small, but in a good direction.
We'll let you go, then we'll move on.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, yep, appreciate it. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is announcement communications, and we had just previously had an executive session this evening from 6:00 to 6:25 to discuss personal matters, and we'll be talking about that shortly. Okay, so next is police and mayor first, if you have any comments. Okay, go ahead, Chief.
This month, it is just strictly the monthly report, no letter. So I figured this month I would be a little short-winded rather than a long-winded. Our total calls for service for March 2025 was 185. Our proactive policing initiatives, building checks were nine, business checks were 80, school checks were 16. Under our reactive policing initiatives, we had one animal complaint, two disturbances, two domestics, one harassment, nine information requests, one missing person, three suspicious activities, two thefts, six traffic complaints, five, under community policing initiatives, we had five assist EMS, two assist police, one assistance request, two family and children calls, eight mutual aid calls, one public service, and four welfare checks. Under other duties, we had one emergency maintenance, we had 52 field contact reports, one 911 hangup, 43 follow-up calls to service, five lost and found, seven mental calls, four PFA violations, one public service, and three validations. Calls covered by PSP, we had none. Incident offenses, we had seven, two were cleared by arrest, there were two adult arrests. Time and attendance, 559 patrol hours, 26.5 overtime hours. No one had taken vacation or BTO hours this month in March. Under traffic enforcement, we had 26 vehicle stops, 11 traffic citations, 15 warnings. We had three parking complaints, no citations or warnings from those complaints. We had three traffic accidents, two reportable, one non-reportable, one on Main Street and South Third, one in the 600 block of Main Street, one in the 500 block of Main Street. For vehicle use, total miles were 1,024.1 miles and 178.8 gallons, and donations from which were $500.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, what's the difference between a reportable traffic accident and a non-reportable?
Non-reportable accident. Reportable accident is a vehicle can't move under its own power or the ability to move. Say like you get into an accident, you can't steer, your bags go off, or you have an injury along with those, okay?
Then it has to be towed.
Towed, yeah. So, and then a non-reportable is a vehicle is like a fender bender. It's able to move under its own power, it's just got a crease in the fender, or just a little ding or dent here or there. But it's able to move under its own power.
Good question.
But then, but then you have to file a report for that for insurance company purposes, right?
Yes, we still have to do an accident report. When you're doing a reportable accident, it only gets filed here as an accident, but it also has to go to PINDO, whereas if you're doing a non-reportable, it just gets filed here. But the insurance companies can request a copy of that report.
A lot of people say, let's not report it to our insurance companies.
No.
One other question for you. Last meeting, we had a spreadsheet that detailed all your stats.
Okay.
Did, was that, did you put, or?
I sent that in the packet last time, but I didn't have it by the time I sent your packet this time, so I'll follow up and send all that so you guys have it.
Okay, but you're gonna provide them each meeting then?
Yep.
Okay, great, great. Thank you for doing that.
Yep. I'll send it out to everybody.
Are you talking about the graphs that I do?
No, the last, what was it, Jessica?
It was all of it, that he sent it all to me.
Everything you read all, basically, it was in print that way. We could see it before the meeting, and I was gonna question if we had it together, which I felt that was really a great idea to provide that.
Yeah, okay, that's all, that's it. Okay, thank you, anybody else?
I have one question. Every month, we're paying overtime hours for police. Is there any way we can curve that in any way, since we do have state coverage available? Is there any way we can curve some of the overtime hours?
Well, you have to understand, some of those overtime hours are due to investigations, late calls, things of that like, and that's why that occurs, okay? And also, there are times when officers are going to court.
Okay.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll move on, no other questions. No public comments, you said, Jess. And the next one, we have some new business here. We need approval of hiring part-time public works employees. I'm gonna turn the time over to Joe for this.
Yep, I make a motion to hire Dave Gamber to the part-time position of public works labor at a rate of $20 an hour upon the completion of a clean background check. Do I have a motion?
Second, that motion.
All in favor then?
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? You're opposed.
He just didn't get down.
Making sure we're on our toes.
The ayes have it.
Okay.
All right. Second, promotion of public works supervisor. I make a motion to promote our public works labor, Dave Williams, to the position of public works supervisor. This position is a salaried role with the yearly compensation of $72,800 per year, and the increase in pay will be starting April 14th on the next payroll. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion.
All.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Nope. The ayes have it. You, no, you can't oppose.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
Thanks, Steve.
What's up with Tim's vote there, because his hands was up the whole time.
Yeah, he's messing with us.
Oh, okay, it didn't move, so I'm like.
Can't do both, huh?
He did.
All right. Okay, thanks, Joe, for that, yep. All right, one last thing, approval of expenditures. Hopefully, like Jennifer said, we have to look over the expenditures, you know, should be looking over, is there any questions with any of those? If not, I do have a motion.
What's the Minuteman Press?
That is the newsletter.
That's a what?
The newsletter, the print for the newsletter.
All quarterly, yeah.
Yep, yep.
That's a good one. I like.
You don't have contact printing when you move five years.
I'm sorry, Conrad.
Yeah, he used to.
I used to want to get my cards to you. Anything else? Yeah, everybody looked, okay, so.
And I added, normally, so it's been just general, but we had some expense out of the Highway 8 account and the PD account, so they're also tacked on there, so you can review them.
Missed that.
The Highway 8 expense, that's.
What page is that on, Jess?
The second to last page. It says one of one.
Oh, the one-on-one?
Yeah.
And the I2.
So we pay those electric bills every single month for the Highway 8 account, and then the brine system, that was some expense to get that up, and then street signs. We have replaced several missing street signs around town.
Yep.
When I say we, I mean Dave.
Yeah, all right. So need a motion to approve these expenditures from 311 to 47.
I will make that motion.
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any other comments from anybody? Jess?
E-recycle will be Saturday.
Oh, yes.
Oh, there you go. E-recycle, good, because I see some people have stuff sitting out.
E-recycle. Yeah, E-cycling will be Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Borough Building.
Okay, hope everybody hears that.
The shop. What is E-recycle?
You mean the Public Works Building?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know where the Public Works Building is?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's where it'll be from 9:00 to 12:00, yeah.
She said, what is it?
What is it? Electronics?
Yeah, electronics, anything with, well, it's electronics and with a cord.
Like TVs.
Yeah, that's right, TVs, computers, things such as that.
Get posters, fans.
Yeah, anything with a cord.
Anything that left us.
That's right.
VCRs.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one of them, I think.
Yeah.
By eight chairs.
Okay, we're going back, yeah.
I think she maybe wanted to talk, but didn't put her name in the list.
I keep a hold of that.
The young lady there, I think she wanted to talk, but didn't put her name in the list.
Oh, do you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Um, yeah, there was an incident that I wanna.
Oh, yeah. Come on up to the microphone there and talk, yeah.
So.
Your name.
Yeah, name.
My name's Rebecca Miller. I live on Front Street in the Trone property.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I have a dog, and I was walking my dog in the neighborhood, and I just, she had to go to the bathroom. She stepped off like a, in the grass to do her business, and that someone came around the corner from their residence and yelled at me, "Get off my grass." So she was mid-poop, she was mid-squat.
Yeah.
I, nothing happened, but it really took me aback as far as safety. Like, he was like 50 something year old man or whatever, 60, and I'm like 29 years old, walking my dog, and it just, he, he was coming around the corner, coming into his driveway, and if I didn't just like go, like I was genuinely concerned that something would have happened. Like, I just grabbed my dog and went across the street and went home, but I just didn't want to escalate that. And I know I called the Borough last week about thinking about a proposal for a dog walking ordinance. Just, like, I don't want someone else my age getting into an altercation with an older gentleman and being nervous like that. So I don't know if there's anything we can do potentially.
You said, did you call the police that night?
No, because it was just so quick. Like I said, I just picked up my dog and we just went home.
But it is a neighbor that lives in town, or was it somebody that you didn't know?
Like across the street. I don't know them, but like on the other side of Front Street.
But it was on their property, the dog was on their property, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the dog, you're on the sidewalk.
Hopefully, people clean up after the dogs that way, and then, of course, when they're doing the other thing, it just happens when it does happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully, most people are understanding it, yeah.
Are you aware that we have a dog park?
Well, the property was right next to it, like, I was, we do go there, yes, but you have to walk the dog to get there, so. But you have to walk the dog to get there, so it was just a bad experience.
We, it's been discussed in the past about a dog. Were you thinking about what kind of ordinance, what would it detail in the ordinance?
Well, like, I know everything from the curb over is the property. But I guess you can still, the sidewalk is still public. But in my mind, if everything is part of the owner's property and you're walking, the dog's walking, where else is the dog supposed to go? Just on the sidewalk? Like, and most dogs are trained to go in the grass. So I know a lot of people have flower beds too, right on the curb between the sidewalk and the curb. So my dog doesn't go on flower beds. Like, I try to be respectful of that, so.
But grass, yeah. I think a lot of us, yeah, I don't know if there's any ordinance. Do you know anything about that, Luke, and how they handle stuff like that?
That would be very, very, very difficult to enforce.
I know, it's a tricky situation. But I just.
Most people are understanding.
The most important thing is you clean up after it.
Oh, yeah, of course.
That part of it.
Like, I even had the bag in my hand and.
That's, that was the aspect, because if one lady comes on our street and no bag or anything.
Just let it rip.
Let it rip.
Chief, do you have any suggestions for the young lady?
Anytime you have an altercation that makes you nervous, you should notify us.
Okay, even though it was like pick up my dog and go quick, like nothing escalated of that because I didn't want it to, obviously.
Stating that it did make you nervous, you were upset, and you should notify us. Because then we can always talk to the person in question, find out exactly what went on, and we can de-escalate it. You don't have to worry about that part.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.